I'd like to call the regular open session meeting of the City Council for April 1st to order. And I'll go to this side and ask if you'd like to maybe some pledge.
Do we have to do it again? Okay.
It's on your agenda.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
So, we were kind of joking at that because we just had a study session when we did the pledge earlier.
Sorry.
Um, roll call.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Plummer.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Such.
Here.
Mayor Garabeta.
Here.
And Deputy City Attorney Philstein is here. Tim Miller, City Administrator is here. Par Chief.
Here.
Police Chief.
Here.
Community Services Director, oh, let's see. What is it, Finding Director?
Yeah, I'm here.
Head Administrative Services Director.
Here.
Um, we have a quorum in staff in prison.
Okay. Item B is City Clerk's Report on Agenda Posting.
At 1:00 on the 29th, the agenda was posted for public view.
Okay. Item C is approval of the agenda. Is there any additions, corrections, submit, um, contractions? So now we'll move on to item D, Presentations. Marian Fiedler, uh, Autism Awareness Proclamation, declaring April as Autism Awareness Month.
(inaudible) It's all ready. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Garabeta, distinguished members of City Council, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Marian Fiedler, and I'm a resident of Sonora, and some of you may know me as a co-owner of Rustic Roses Antiques and Vintage, um, just down the street. I contacted Mr. Miller to request his assistance in allowing me a few minutes to present the proposed Autism Awareness Proclamation for the City Council of Sonora for your approval. And I'd like to express my appreciation to Mr. Miller for taking the time to discuss my proposal and add you to the agenda today. My son, Aubrey, was diagnosed with autism when he was three years old in 2004. We relocated to Sonora from within in 2016, and since then, other than his public school special education placement, I have not found or heard of any local autism resources, uh, resource agencies or services. Therefore, as a starting point, I present the Autism Awareness Proclamation for your kind approval as a starting point for the City of Sonora. On April 1st, 2016, World Autism Awareness Day was declared by presidential proclamation, and following that in 2018, California Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 125 designated April as Autism Awareness Month, and many counties and cities have since then adopted similar proposals and, uh, for Autism Awareness Month. Um, while some of you recognize me as a storyteller boutique owner, I worked as a disability advocate since 2005 with a civil rights law firm in Oakland and two 501(c)(3) nonprofits providing training and information to families needing assistance. I hope that by, um, the city's designation of Autism Awareness Month here, I can further, um, organize, uh, information and training to parents in the community going forward. Um, so, I prepared the proclamation, and I think I received a copy of it by email as well, so I'm hoping that the city will, um, unanimously approve, um, approve of the Autism Awareness Proclamation. Thank you.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Did you have a question? Um, so where do you or your son go for services? Or how far do you have to go?
Uh, Valley Mountain Regional Center, one of the 21 California regional centers, um, does provide services here. They're not very visible. I contacted the Disability Rights Council, um, and our coordinating representative there, who oversees Valley Mountain Regional Center, is Ryan Bradley, and he is equally confounded that over the past 20 or more years, there is a lack of access, or there's a lack of services, period, in this area, as far as...
Where is, where is, where is that organization? Is that, that's not locally, I guess.
Valley Mountain Regional Center does have a local, it's a small office here. Um, their main office is, is, I believe it's in Stockton now. They have a new building, they've been remodeling.
Any questions?
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I could open to, um, public comment on that item, if anyone wants to speak on that. And okay, then I'll bring you back for a motion.
Um, I'm... I would very much like to make a motion as I have a nephew who has, uh, light autism and resources help to break the deal. Is my mic not on?
No, it's not.
Okay. Just to...
Please move it through the preliminary proclamation.
I second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, uh, moved by a council member, only seconded by a council member, such to approve the proclamation, and, uh, call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor, you do have a framed signed copy to present.
So Marian, would you like to...
(inaudible) Thank you so much.
Item number E is public comment for non-agenda items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation.
Hello. My name is Martin Boyk, and I'm a 40-year resident of Tualamise County, and I have to say I've attended every Meadow Brook Roundup during those 40 years. I'm here to talk about my concern about the cancellation of the Spring Festival at the end of April. Uh, to me, that was a, really a nice thing for Sonora to have. People would dress up. It was a little different than the western-themed celebrations, which are awesome that, that we have throughout the year. I was also concerned, uh, why this particular new event with the spring cancellation, uh, Spring Festival cancellation, we have a new Wild West Fest coming the following week. I read in the newspaper, and this is the week right after Roundup, which is of course a western-themed celebration. So I'm really not certain why we need another western-themed celebration the week after Roundup. Not to mention that it's also the week of Frog Jump in Calaveras County. Now, I know not everybody from, uh, Sonora, Tualamise County goes to Calaveras County, but in respect of what Calaveras County is doing, I don't think we should have a festival on the same day as Frog Jump. I was also concerned when the, uh, Events Coordinator, Ms. Kellogg, I believe, mentioned in the newspaper article that she and her staff forgot to look to see if there were any other events scheduled for that weekend. I mean, this is your events coordinator. Uh, you would think you could look at a newspaper and see what was happening, uh, that particular weekend. And then the article also mentioned, um, that we didn't want this festival to be confused with the Angels Camp Western Festival, with the Groveland Western Festival. In other words, we have so many western festivals, we don't know what to do with them all. How about a Spring Festival? Yes, it might rain on that particular day, but so what? It's rained on, on Roundup Day. It's rained, it's rained on the weekends after Roundup. I, I want to see a Spring Festival. I want to see people coming to town dressed up. I've seen enough cowboy hats to last a lifetime, and I love cowboy hats. Thank you.
(inaudible)
I'm Jared Johnson, and I was one of the, uh, Leadership Tualamise County Class of 2017, 2018, and as a class project, we put on the very first volunteer fair.
And my name's Robin Rowland. I was a classmate of Gary's, and also I had a lot of fun helping to organize that first fair.
And I'm Dr. Robin Walters with Project For Your Kids. I'm the founder of it, and I'm hosting this wonderful fair this year.
So what I wanted to invite everybody to not only, um, pass the word about our volunteer fair this year, but also attend it, and it's an amazing event that happens on the...
Hey Gary, can you put up to my phone?
Sorry. It happens on the 25th, I have to teach, just like, make my voice deliver. Um, it's happening on the 25th of April from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the, um, John Muir Building at the Meadow Brook Fair Palace. And, um, currently we have 65 tables that have already been reserved by nonprofit organizations from our community, and actually we can use 10 more. So if you know any other nonprofits that would like to, uh, be part of us, uh, yeah, Robin will tell you about a phone number or an email address you can... This one. We've got two Robins here.
We also want to point out that April is National Volunteer Month, and it was declared so as part of President H.W. Bush's Thousand Points of Light Campaign in 1991. So we're very intentional about having a fair during the month of April, and think that it's a great way to celebrate volunteerism locally here in Tualamise County.
And another great thing is that partly the fair, the volunteer fair, is that I'm new, as a media nonprofit, um, I really benefited from this last year. It was an awesome program. I had a gentleman that was actually homeless with four children, and he came up and he goes, "I want to teach my kids," because I lost my job through an injury, and he goes, "I love what you do," and he goes, "I would like to just give my time, because I believe that by giving back, that something as wonderful is going to happen to me." He's been with me for a year now, and what's been awesome, it came from this fair, and he actually now has a job. He's working, everything's fine, his family's good, but the amazing thing with this is that it connects these nonprofits together, lets people see these nonprofits, and this is a wonderful thing for our city to do and to have, and to have the participation from everyone here. Everyone needs to volunteer, because it changes your life to get involved, to see what is happening in our, in our county, what's happening in our city, and there's so many nonprofits out there that can benefit from somebody saying yes.
Well, 24% of Californians believe in or not volunteer, and so, you know, kind of a large number to imagine. Um, last year's fair, to the people who have returned, we did a survey, and it turned out we got about 75 volunteers that were acquired. And one person even said they got a volunteer that was now one of their new board members. So, and obviously by all of your help and word of mouth, social media, telling everybody about this, we'd like to have way more people than that come in, so our organizations keep getting stronger and stronger and stronger.
Um, and there's also studies out that show that folks who do volunteer with organizations feel so connected to those organizations that financially they give more to those organizations, so in addition to the manpower, which is so desperately needed, volunteerism also helps to fund those same programs. And just to know a little bit about who's sponsoring our program, this is the Sonora Area Foundation sponsoring this, and with me being the host in that, we're working together to really bring this community alive and to show the leadership and what's happened here, so that other, other counties will get involved, because they do. Calaveras County's been calling, "How can we get involved?" And it's like, we're saying, "Well, this is for Tualamise County." So, um, we're hoping that with the, um, the people that we have and for the last couple of years, um, two years ago, and these guys, a year ago, and they started this, it was just to show leadership, but this county has really taken it over, and it also helps the other nonprofits. There's so many nonprofits out there, they don't know who does what, and a lot of times we're crossing over, but just by us being there, they can go, "Whoa, we can, we can come together and work together." So, um, we're looking for the community to come up and to really step up with this, and we would also thank Sonora Foundation for actually helping us get this done.
And I, funny thing happened today to me, because I was on the phone with a lady from the, um, Tualamise County Superintendent Schools Office, and so I just asked her, I said, "What kind of volunteer do you need?" And she said, "Well, we, you know, we sometimes, we, we do science fairings, and we lead judges and stuff like that." And I went, "Well, I was an eighth-grade science teacher for 25 years, and I put on numerous science fairs. Like, I'd be more than willing to volunteer for you." So I got volunteered today. So I thought, and I think that's exactly how this whole thing should happen, because people walk in a door, we don't know what skills you have. You walk up to the nonprofits, you feel a nice bond with somebody, and pretty soon, you and hopefully one of your friends that comes with you, um, get to volunteer together, and you get to do something you're passionate about.
We have a Facebook page, so we'd like to encourage you all to, um, like it and share it with your friends. Uh, it is the 2019 Tualamise County Volunteer Fair page, and with all the controversial Facebook information out there, it's a very positive way to connect communities. Yeah, and one last thing, if you'd like to get involved, if you'd like some posters, if you'd like to have a flyer, which we have, we have some here, you can stop by the Antique Attic where the Project For Your Kid is located, kids are located at, and you can come on in, and we do have all those for you. Pass them out, tell a friend. We would really like this to be a great event. We'd like to keep it going for the years to come. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and word of mouth is the number one way of telling everybody about it. If you can go out and tell 10 people, that'd be wonderful. Stop by Robin where she is located, and she'll give you more posters to hand out. You can even take your phone and photograph the flyer we just handed you, text it to a friend or email it to a friend, and now you've got all this going, all posted on your own Facebook page. Do you guys have any questions? Go ahead.
How much, is there a price for a ticket?
It's free. That's the part, that was one of my things. It's absolutely free. We are all volunteers. We saw such an amazing event last year. It was free last year. It always will be free. It's going to go on year after year after year. It's already been, you know, scheduled for future, so there's no cost. We even are providing food. Um, there's a budget, and by the way, Sonora Area Foundation is the one who gave us the money to purchase the food, purchase the fair ground, um, John Muir Building, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. For the posters, that's how we got that. So, somebody gave money to him to do projects like what we're doing, which is so cool. It's free, 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 free.
Free!
And it always will be free. Yes.
Any hours from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m.?
3:00 to 6:00 p.m., yeah. Yes. Yeah, and all the people will be there, be all ready for it, and talk, talk to anybody who wants in. And I have a whole list of people eating night meals. We'll start.
Robin, if, if another volunteer group is interested, they contact you at this number, then 225-0459?
That's it. Yes. Thank you.
Or email us, which comes right to our phones. Any other questions? We'd love to see you all there, and tell, please tell everybody, okay? Thank you. (applause) Thanks for your time.
Okay. Do that. Anyone else want to speak on public comment?
Hi, Barbara Dressler. I have some photos that I'll be referencing, and if you want to share them amongst yourselves. Um, Tim Miller provided the easement agreement between the City of Sonora and 55 Properties, also known as TradeO Corporation, and I think there's some other iterations. Um, this document has the City of Sonora Restoring Declarent, that would be TradeO, 55 Property, Poverty and Improvements to Light Condition in the Event of Failure of the Storm Drain System Attached to the Manhole Access Now Enclosed in the Interior of the Armory. I'm showing you photos of the location of that manhole in relation to the exterior and lower bearing walls of the armory, um, in the interior, and I'm also providing photo on, on the front of that packet by Maggie Beck of the extent of the work that was necessary in the failure of that same storm drain further down the system, which was immediately adjacent to the TradeO Building. Um, if you look at those pictures and look at that photo in the front, I wonder who here believes that that sinkhole repair that was in the V of A could have, um, been managed, this, the way that was managed and, and how it would be needed to be managed if that had been in the interior of the armory. Um, this is to demonstrate to everyone here, um, all the City Council members with the exception of collect such, of the exposure that the City of Sonora is under with this easement. This sinkhole in the Bank of America parking lot could have occurred just as easily under the armory. Um, Bill Seldon, retired Public Works Director, warned the City Council before they approved this easement that the failure will happen again, that that storm drain, just outside the TradeO Building, and also extended to the manhole cover inside the TradeO Armory Building, um, and it will happen again. This is a pattern, I believe, of rushing decisions without sufficient research and caution in this City Council, we, as well as lack of planning for replacing a gold rush era infrastructure. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to Consent Calendar. Items on the Consent Calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion. Unless a council member or member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item, in that case, the item will be removed from the City, uh, from the Consent Calendar and considered separately. The items are, one, to approve the meeting minutes of the open session meeting of March, City Council meeting of March 18th. Two, approval of pay invoices on previously budgeted expenses on April 2nd, 2019, and three, is approval of disbursements in the amount of $149,492.06 on March 29th, 2019 for payroll, inclusive of employee salaries, employer-employee taxes, and retirement contributions, and miscellaneous voluntary employee deductions. Anyone else to pull an item off the... Okay, is there any public comment on Consent Calendar? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion on Consent Calendar.
Move to approve.
It's been moved by America, Tim Hawkins, seconded by Councilmember Plummer, to approve the Consent Calendar. All the calls for questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Item G is unfinished business. There is none. Item H is public hearings. There are none. Item I, new business. First item is consideration to approve the request from the Tap Room to allow possession and consumption of alcohol, beer or, beer and wine, just, just beer and wine, on Leidenberg Street during their second anniversary party on Saturday, April 13th, 2019. Ms. Miller.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Similar to previous requests, you have, uh, request to have alcohol on Leidenberg Street in conjunction with an event sponsored by the Tap Room. This would be for their, um, second anniversary. There were several events held, um, last, uh, spring and, and summer. Um, this is the first that's, uh, being held on Leidenberg with this sponsor for this year. Due to some concerns of adjoining business, the music start time has been delayed by an hour. Music would be from 8:00 to 11:00, thus to coincide with the time of the business, the corner business would close. The conditions that are being proposed remain the same as, uh, what the council has adopted before, and, uh, one of the other concerns that was expressed was the use of the fencing. Fencing that goes up is now screened with a bamboo type material or garden type material, so it's, is blended in as well as can be. And the other part of the request is to allow, um, rocking barbecue to keep, provide catering services for this event. So with that, I'll be happy to answer questions of the council.
Any questions of staff? Let.
Do you know what surrounding businesses have been notified of this event?
Um, Sheila was instructed to notify, I guess I don't have a timer, um, both John Williams Business and the...
Diamondback?
Diamondback and Vinnie's, the beats the carload behind. And I don't know that we got any other... I didn't get any comments from her, did... Rochelle didn't?
She, she commented, she did contact Aubrey.
Okay, so they're aware of the request.
I would ask that in, in the future, that that is actually added to the application?
It is in the application. The business owners are required to contact the...
Does it say?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, that's not the entire application. They're, they're to advise the adjoining property owners within five days of the event, and we took the additional steps to advise them of the meeting tonight.
Do you have questions?
I have two questions. One is, um, the music will go until 11:00 o'clock. Um, the Sonora Chamber, their music in the park, the music always goes till 10:00 o'clock, and I'm wondering why?
So their event usually was for three hours. Started at 7:00 and ended at 10:00. We adjusted the hour back to 8:00 and allowed for the three hours. We have had events downtown, there were two, I believe, um, down by the Bourbon Barrel, one was an October, Oktoberfest event or something, Halloween event, I should say. Uh, that went till 11:00 o'clock at night. Um, so it's not, we haven't done that here, but it has been done in other locations downtown.
And the other, um, question is, um, you gave us, um, the code regarding portable food vending business, and my question is, um, there's a, there's a new law that went into effect, which is SB, um, 946, I believe, and, um, does, does that bill affect anything to do with our existing ordinance?
The existing ordinance needs to conform to the state requirements, which is much more lenient with regard to portable food vendors than, um, what our current ordinance provides for, but, but what is being proposed, it wouldn't really fall under the food vendor category, because it's a, it's a barbecue trailer. I mean, it's, it's not like it's going to move from place to place. It's going to be set up, and it's going to be a catered event. So I provided that, um, section of the code so you are aware of there, about what the restrictions are, um, and, uh, since it's in the public street, there should be some exception granted by the council to allow that.
Okay.
Any other?
That's it.
Any other questions? Okay. Then I will open it up for public, uh, comment. Is there anyone like to speak on this item?
I'd like to answer a few questions. I'm mainly the owner of the Tap Room. Um, so I just wanted to answer a few questions that came up. I know Tim spoke on our behalf, but I felt necessary that she respond as well. Um, this is, uh, such, I have the rules and regulations here, if you want to see them. Um, number seven says we are to notify the, um, surrounding businesses. Number seven on there. Um, and I did that on Friday. So I've spoken with Vinnie, um, his wife Vivian, actually. Um, I spoke with John, and I spoke with, well, Frank wasn't there, but I went to all businesses. I left Frank a note, um, on Friday, so they've all been notified. Um, I did speak with John, and he is closing early that day. Um, I don't know if this confuses things or not, but he said he has a family birthday at 6:30, will be closing, um, so we can make it earlier, if that makes any difference to anybody, and do it between 8:00 and 10:00. and 10:00 our normal hours, or 7:00 and 10:00, excuse me. That's just something I wanted to throw out there. And then as far as the other question about the fencing, we did this at our last event when we bought this bamboo roll stuff from Orchard Supply and covered all the fencing. We also are going to have some banners over it. So it looked pretty nice the last time. Didn't have the scary chain link effect as the prison thing that we had had a few times before that. So hopefully it'll be much more appealing. And yeah, that's it. Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
Would you prefer 7:00 to 10:00?
We would, yes. We have a small child and it's kind of a family oriented event, so having it earlier in the day would be, would be great. Plus, it's going to be a catered event, so it's more around dinner time hours. Yes.
I think we can, I think so. Yeah. Any other questions for?
No, I just wish you the best of success.
Thank you.
You've done a great job.
Thank you.
A lot of, a lot of great compliments, but even the restaurants that are around you appear to be supportive or, I haven't really heard much from Diamondback, but the others, you know, have been very supportive.
Oh, yeah. Definitely.
Good job.
Good job on the things, thank you. Okay, thanks. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and/or motion.
I move to approve the request from the Tap Room to allow the possession and consumption of alcohol, beer and wine, on Leidenberg Street during their second anniversary party on Saturday, April 13th, 2019 with the amended hours of 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Awesome.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Proton Hawkins, second by council member Williams. Is there any further discussion? Then I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Okay, excuse me. Item number two is consideration to adopt resolution number 04-01-2019-A authorizing the closure of State Route 49, Washington Street and Stockton Road and other city streets for the Motherlode Roundup Parade and rodeo from on May 11th and 12th, 2019. Chief Vanderweil.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, I'm the council. In support of Toma County Sheriff Posse's request to host this roundup parade on May 11th, which is Saturday preceding Mother's Day, as we do every year, I would request council considering adoption of resolution 04-01-2019-A authorizing closure of State Route 49 along with other city streets to accommodate the 2019 Motherlode Roundup Parade. As you know, this happens each year and parade is scheduled this year for Saturday, May 11th, as I said. And I would like to make a correction on the document. You have a type of clerical error under background. Last sentence, it says Saturday, May 12th and Sunday, May 12th. So Saturday, May 12th should be changed to 11:00. I blame my clerk, who is me. So you make that change. Anyway, it's scheduled to start around 10:00 a.m. and last until 1:00 p.m. And due to the size and duration of the parade, to properly accommodate this type of event, we would need to close down State Route 49, South Washington Street, and some of the side streets between Marine Street and Stewart Street. There's also a parking restrictions that we put in place. No parking between 5:00 a.m. and when the parade route opens back at 1:00 p.m. And other city streets to accommodate additional parking for the rodeo, which will start also at 5:00 a.m. on Saturday and end at 5:00 p.m. on Sunday. With that, I can turn it over to the board for the council for questions. We also have Mr. Opey here, who is coordinator for this event. This is who I believe would like to say a few things.
First, let's see if there's any questions for Mr. or for the, please chief. Okay. Jim, you're up.
Thank you very much. My name is James Opey. I'm representing Toma County Sheriff Posse. For those of you I didn't grow up with. Anyway, this is our 62nd annual Motherlode Roundup. I'm still, just, I don't know that I'm going to be able to make it without Mr. Rogers, our, our competent officer that's been my sidekick for the last 20 years doing this. So anyway, moving on. Okay. Anyway, a couple of things. One of the things that we didn't mention in that is that as a rule, as a rule, the city relaxes the consumption of alcohol for this parade.
And that's the next item.
Okay.
Not this one.
Okay. So I'll follow up later. Anyway, needed to make sure about that. I don't see any problems. We're expecting our normal deal. You guys have been gracious enough to help us sponsor this event and through the city's help and that I'm looking for also, always, always looking for the city's help and we appreciate everything you guys do for us as well as what we do for you in bringing the crowd to town. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Opey? Seeing none? Is it going to be bigger and better than ever?
I don't think we'll ever hit that milestone ever again. The biggest was, I want to say, 77 to 79, and it was over 340 entries. I want to say 26 bands, nine sections, and it was still going when the rodeo started to apply. So, yeah, it lasted four hours plus.
So what's it take to enter into the parade?
An entry. A form. Would you like me to give you one?
Yes, yeah, what's your personal phone number? That's what you want.
What's your corporate? 76A0622. And actually, you'll have some forms here at City Hall. We pass them around different places in town and City Hall holds them here and Democrat and a handful of businesses, myself and other places throughout the community and or the county.
On that note, what is the entrance fee?
$25. Unless you're official, that's 40.
Right.
Yeah. We give you a discount.
I just want to say you make it very easy, so thank you, the process of entering the parade.
Say it one more time, please.
You make the process of entering the parade very easy, so thank you for that.
I do, as other people, not me. I'm a people.
Your people do.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yes, we, we try to accommodate. And even though it says, you know, no, no possible follow-up after the 25th this year, you know, somebody calls, it's like, get down here. Get your paperwork down here. The last week, it's done, but before that, it's pretty much come on down.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it, oh, there is, I do have a question. I know in the past that we've closed the parking lot at the museum for the fundraiser for the Fire Museum, and I notice that's not on there. I hope it's been on it for a while.
It should be.
Yeah. It would go under the 5:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. portion that has the list of 15. So I'm treating my fellow council members to, when they make the motion, to add that back in. And I'll be entertaining the motion.
And it's just, we're just closing on May 11th, correct? Not 11/12. As per the public's consent.
Can we reach that?
It's just the 11th, May 11th.
The street closure.
Or for the street closure and no parking on Washington Street. And those to accommodate the parade itself, yes. But there are certain portions of Sonora's and streets that were requesting closure or no parking for the duration of Motherlode Weekend, which allows for additional parking and traffic on some of the streets around Fairmount.
That's in the next to last page of the resolution.
Just wanted the public to know that we're closing some streets all day.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be thrilled once again to, to move to accept about resolution number 04-01-2019-A with the provision that we also close the Fire Museum parking lot during those no parking hours.
On Saturday.
On Saturday only.
On Saturday.
During the parade. Okay. Okay, it's been moved by council member Plummer and seconded by council member Williams to adopt the resolution with the objection. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Item number three is consideration of adoption of resolution 04-01-2019-B authorizing the possession and consumption of alcoholic beverages within the street closure area of the Motherlode Roundup Parade on May 11th, 2019. Chief Vanderweil.
Yes, so the Toma County Sheriff Posse has also requested that, again this year, the city allow for the open consumption of alcohol, possession of alcohol containers within the coordinated areas of the parade and during the, for the duration of the parade. So California state law, as well as city ordinance, prohibits the use of, or possession and consumption of alcohol beverages in public. However, council can through, and has through a resolution, allow this to happen for this period of time within the area of the parade perimeter. So it would begin once the parade starts at 10:00 a.m. and the provision would discontinue as soon as the boundaries are taken down, usually around 1:00. We do allow about 15 minutes after the parade ends to for everyone to clear out. So while they're clearing out, we're actually start putting stuff away. So once the streets are open, there are no alcoholic containers or beverages in public. And part of that, in the interest of safety, we also asked that provision would be made that no glass containers and bottles, alcoholic bottles be possessed in public at that time.
Any questions for the chief? Seeing none, then I'll open up to public comment. No?
Covered.
Okay. Anyone else? Uh, council member such?
Can you, are there any problems from, you know, public drinking outside during the parade in the past? Do you know? Is there any reason not to do this?
I, okay, so that's where I stand with this. As a new chief of police for the city, it's obviously something I wanted to consider, but I look at the past and there hasn't been any notable incidents that's come up because of this. Now, anytime you have a large amount of people, you introduce alcohol, naturally the likelihood will increase that something could happen. But for the most part, people have been respective, respectful of the history of this and why we do it and we're allowing it, and it hasn't been a problem. So until it is a problem, I would support, you know, the historical value of it, traditional value of it from a police perspective.
Okay. Any other questions? And I think I asked, anyone else on public comment? Okay, bring it back to the council and for discussion and/or motion.
I'll move to adopt resolution number 4-01-2019-B authorizing the possession and consumption of alcoholic beverages within the street closure area of the Motherlode Roundup Parade on May 11th, 2019.
Awesome.
Okay. It's been moved by Mayor Proton Hawkins and seconded by council member Williams to adopt resolution 104-01-2019-B. Call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Item number four under new business is consideration of impossible directions staff regarding the 65% plans for the Red Church pedestrian and circulation project for pedestrian and vehicular circulation improvements at the Snell, Washington and Elkin Streets intersection. Let's go up.
Thank you. I'm just going to introduce it for a second and then we do have Gaylord Wright who's going to go with Willden, who is going to go over the changes between the 35% plans that were presented to the council back in January to the 65% plans, which are for you tonight. There's extra copies up here at the table if any of you guys in the public would like to grab a copy because I know it is difficult with presenting things for sometimes in the public for people to see. Again, back in January, the 35% plan was presented for consideration by the council. We just see council comments. We also had to see previous stakeholder comments and took those in under consideration. And Willden and the engineer began working through the process of developing the 65% plans. We have met twice now with Caltrans. We met with them early on after the council made direction on the 35% plans to discuss the project and what we need to consider as we move forward. We've also recently met with them on the 65% plans, again reviewing some of the requirements and also talking about any design exceptions that are outside of their normal standards. Doesn't mean it's something that they don't like always, it just means that it is a process that you have to go through because you're outside their standards. Even if it's part of their complete streets, you still are outside of some of their standards. So it does require a design exception process through Caltrans. So those plans are, we've already submitted, Willden has already submitted the enrichment comment, the design exception documents ready to go as 65% plans will be going up. And then they'll start through that process once we get moving forward from today. So I am going to have Gaylord come up. He can go through what has been changed, talk to the 35% plan, answer any questions, and then answer anything that you guys may have related to anything else.
Okay. Any questions for Rochelle at this point?
No.
Okay, let's go for it.
Good evening, I think it's Gaylord Wright. Actually, I just got a text from Caltrans. They approved everything and we can start work tomorrow.
Oh, not so fast.
Yeah. What date is today?
What is today? The plan should look, majority look just like what you saw at 35%. We have just kind of enhanced some areas and furthered the design in specific areas. It's way over there. If you need me to point something out, I'm happy to run over there. But starting down at the City Hall, one of the notable changes is we added the brick bands that you've seen around the City Hall. They're about two feet wide. They space every 20 to 25 feet along the sidewalks. So we spaced those out from City Hall up the Snell and then from Elkin down to where our crosswalk is just past the museum. The bulb out at City Hall there at the parking garage, we basically, it's pretty much the same shape you saw before. We added some curb returns that will allow the street sweeper to maneuver through there to keep the gutters clean. And then we refined the ADA slopes to show that it will comply. This sheet right here is 1 of 9. It's actually... There's actually eight other sheets that give more detail to all the specific areas. Further up in front of Sonora Insurance, we have this little bulb out right here. It was, last time you saw it, I think we called it the landscape area. Now we're calling it hardscape and we proposed a brick pattern to align that with. Up at Snell, the design right there is pretty much what you saw before. The only thing to change is some of the slopes on the ADA ramp. I just made sure that it needed a needs code. The two driveways right there, we're still proposing roll curve and it will be pretty much what Jerry had done on the motorway lining. You look at Buck's Autobody or Pennell's Carpet Line, it's just a smaller roll curve that goes right on with the sidewalk. So it's just like a little, probably three inch bump to get up over the sidewalk. At the Red Church, the bulb out is the same shape that you guys saw before. It was pretty plain before, we've proposed brick surfacing there and then changed the wheelchair ramps. The, what we're proposing now is a raised sidewalk, so right now everything's at the same grade. There was a talk of putting the bollards back out there, but now we're gonna be raised up, it'll look less like the regular sidewalk as far as the vertical separation from the roadway, so we are not proposing the bollards anymore. At the northeast corner of Elkin, we, from what you saw before, per your direction, we've actually pulled the sidewalk a little bit further out towards Elkin, kinda keep people, the drivers a little truer so that they're not, force them more towards the center line of Elkin, so they're not driving over that curb cut when they're making the right-hand turn. It's only about two feet. It's not a lot, but it actually allowed us to make that wheelchair ramp more compliant because now we have more space behind the ramp before the, I'm not sure what house, the Harden House, there is a mansion right there. On the southeast side of Elkin, it's pretty much exactly what you saw before, we're just removing that kinda outdated wheelchair ramp, a replacement with a new, you know, a new wheelchair ramp with the proper slopes. We added the brick bands, as I mentioned. Down at the, where the bulb out comes across from City Hall, that, like I said, is pretty much the same with the provision of a street sweeping radii and we proposed some brick lining there too. The, on the wheelchair ramps, they have the truncated domes that you've seen around everywhere. We're proposing rust colored as opposed to the bright yellow that you see everywhere else. And that's pretty much the one for the changes. You have any questions for me?
Yeah, and everywhere you have the, is it everywhere you have the truncated domes you're doing rest or is it only just there?
All, at all of them.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, yeah. Any questions? Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it looks like, to me, coming from Snell Street onto Washington Street, before it appeared to be more of a angle getting on, it doesn't look like it's nearly sharp as it was.
It's, it's not as sharp as it is right now. It's, it's pretty much the same as the 35%. I might have, it might have been over here a little bit more, we may have pushed it a little bit, but not very much.
Basically to make that right turn on Washington Street from Snell, it just, it doesn't look quite as drastic as it was.
And stop, pardon?
Right, right here?
Yes.
Yeah, well, yeah, it stops right here, right now.
Okay.
So we did push it out, once we kinda took out the parking space that was right here, we did push it out to give a little more sight distance towards the people coming south of 49.
I have a question. If you were to remove the bulb out in front of Dorothy's and Sonora Insurance, would you still move the stop, the line, the stop line?
No.
You would, you'd keep it where it currently is?
Yeah, 'cause the tail end of the parking space is right. If we wanted to, you know, move the stop bar, it probably would still impact that parking space.
Thanks.
Well, with this, with this plan, just for the public's knowledge, how many parking spaces are being eliminated?
One.
Just that one, there's one right there where the hardscape is going.
Two. The one across the street also? Isn't that curb going to be painted red? That they park in this?
Yeah, well, yeah, right, right now, right here, this curb is yellow.
Right.
That we are proposing to make it red. So the delivery trucks, when they park there, creates quite a visual impairment.
I think that's more of a city thing, I think we're considering doing it anyway.
I understand. It's the one thing I agree with. Um, may I ask you another question? I have a question. The crosswalk in front of City Hall is 14 feet wide, but the crosswalks, all the other crosswalks are 10? Why is the one in front of City Hall so wide?
It's because the, the Caltrans standard, you have the four-foot wheelchair ramp and then you have flares on the sides. Those flares have specific slope requirements and the wheelchair, the crosswalk is supposed to be the same width as those flares. And those flares, it's based on, you know, the grade of the road, you know, Washington Street and then having those flares come back to existing ground. So it's, it's...
Is it, so does it have to be 14 feet? I mean, is it, is, could you have those flares and have it be a narrow crosswalk?
It wouldn't follow their guidelines, right.
Anything else?
Yes, will you finish, Collette?
For now. For now. Certainly not forever.
So in front of the Red Church.
Yes.
Where you're going to raise the sidewalk. The Vision Sonora Design Committee had recommended that we put in antique-looking bollards. And even though the sidewalk is raised, I have a concern about people stepping on that into the street. Is there a reason why we wouldn't put some kind of a bollard in?
Well, I don't know that the bollard would stop anyone from stepping over the curb. It would basically be the same scenario you would have up and down the main street where you have the sidewalk adjacent to the roadway, but it's just a vertical curve, just like you see out in front of City Hall right now. With the bollards, they, bollards are meant to, they make to be breakaway. So if a person's driving a car, hits it, it doesn't cause further damage to the car. It's kind of in direct contrast to why you put it there for pedestrian. Because you don't want it falling over on the pedestrian, but, so there is, I mean, Caltrans, their focus and a lot of their details is for the car, the vehicle. So there is a little bit of a...
So is that why the bollards work?
Are, yes.
And there's a turning track pattern?
Oh, yes.
Coming off of Elkin going north?
Yes.
Could you explain that?
Yes. Right here, it's similar to what is out on Greenlee Road right now, or coming off of Greenlee onto Mona Way. When we were out there, there's a lot of people that if someone's not stopped at Elkin at that stop sign, they cut across from Washington over to Elkin, probably because they see they're, you know, they're opening the traffic, but they will, they'll, they'll cut right through here. So it was kind of a way to guide them, kind of keep them on, so to speak, and...
Keep them in their lane.
Keep them in their lane.
Plus, I think it helps with people that have left, like turn only there, I've seen people come straight across to go to Snell off of Elkin. And that's also an idea, that's a good idea for those people as well.
The, in front of Dorothy's Christmas store.
Yes.
Will that be raised as well?
Yes.
And there will not be any water or electricity there?
Correct.
Where's the sign going that's, has the sign been moved that's going away at the Fire Museum?
We'll address that.
Okay.
We'll find, we'll find a place where it doesn't create an obstruction.
Okay. Okay, that's it.
I did forget one thing on the, on the parking garage. We are planning to remove and replace the existing planters that come out, that the trees have kinda lifted them up. At this point, we're planning to keep vegetation, but we are gonna take those down and rebuild them as part of the sidewalk rehabilitation.
Will we have water?
Only if it's there.
Will you, excuse me, will you use the same brick?
I don't know. I think we're gonna use the same style of brick and the same size.
So you could either try and match what's on the building or match what's gonna go in the sidewalk. It'll be easier to match what's going in the sidewalk.
Yeah, I'm just not a fan of losing another parking space. So it's, I mean, that's, to me, in my opinion, that's a prime parking spot for, quite frankly, Sue's Insurance or Dorothy's Christmas or Sonora Insurance, right, it's right there, so.
Any more questions for?
Yes. Like this, is this...
It looks like Matt, Matt, Mark, go ahead, is.
I'm not very artistic. Are there any artist renderings this where we can see what it looks like, the, the brick up there beyond my tiny imagination? Not like I'm context or...
The last rendering we saw had a part that wasn't feasible, but I don't, there's no one that exists.
Okay, that's, that's, no, no. And then the other question was, it sounded like northeast Elkin.
Yes.
That ramp. My concern when we spoke last time was that something needed to be, something needed to keep people from driving over pedestrians' feet there. And it looks like the solution was to pull it farther into the street. Do the sidewalks come close enough that they make it kinda lumpy going, cutting that corner?
Right now, the sidewalk that comes down Elkin, it comes in and it actually, it actually angles in, so we kinda kept it straighter. So when you're driving down Elkin, you're, you know, as the curb angles in, your eye follows it and your steering tends to follow it. So we tried to keep it straight, so you come straight towards the, the stop bar and then go, you wouldn't already be cheating towards the wheelchair ramp.
Okay, I'm, I'm not seeing it in my mind right now. Because the problem is, is that the drivers coming down there aren't looking to the north at all.
Right.
They're just looking at the south. As soon as there's a break, they turn and then they look and say, ooh, I just about ran over somebody. So to get back to, I guess, my question then is, is this gonna be harder to run over the curb there or easier?
I think it'll be, you know, as far as driving over it, it's gonna be all at grade. I think that it will tend to push the people further towards the center line of Elkin as opposed to cheating over before they get there. But if they cut the corner when they make their turn, it'll, it'll be...
Okay, because some of my neighbors have spoken to me about it. And, I mean, my hope was that we could have some six-inch bollard or something that if a trailer cheats, it won't run into something hard and fixed, but it's, and, but you'll bump over it. Anybody otherwise cutting it will quickly realize, hey, I'm off the road now, I'm hitting something. And it would still be possible for wheelchairs to pass over the curb. And I don't see that, because the reason for my concern is, that particular crossing is where we've had 80%, 85% of all our accidents. And it's the one that's being least addressed. Almost every time I come to walk downtown, because I live right there, somebody does not see me, if I weren't standing five feet back, would run over my toes. That's something that I think in this project, we really need to address somehow so that it, like I say, if a trailer cheats, I mean, we had some 60-foot delivery truck get stuck up on the higher end of that once. GPS will do all kinds of things now that aren't practical, but, so it needs to, it needs to be possible to cheat a little bit without doing great damage to vehicles, but we need something there to keep it, people from routinely, almost 90% of the cars are gonna be cutting that, I mean, right now. And if we extend it farther in to the road, I don't think people are gonna be looking any more than they do now. So...
We did bring up the idea of the bollards with Caltrans.
Okay.
They didn't like it.
They didn't like it. They'd rather people get their toes locked off or, I mean, I know they wouldn't, but... Okay, thank you, I'm done.
Sorry.
Okay, Matt, did you have something? Collette, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, Matt. I just have a question, well, I have a couple of questions, but about Elkin, aren't you also, there, at that corner that Mark is concerned about and appropriately so, there's barely any curb at all. I mean, this, the curb is, you know, inches above the street level, right at that corner.
Right, right where the wheelchair ramp is.
Right. But you're raising, not the wheelchair part, but you're raising the, the other curbs, are you not?
No.
Or not?
No, they were just, we're just changing the angle of them with respect to the center line of Elkin. But they, they're still, I mean, further up Elkin, it's probably a 10-inch curb.
Yeah, it is.
And then it comes down, right where the DI is, and then it comes down to like a half inch, so...
It just sort of looks, it almost, the way it's designed now, it almost begs someone to cut. I mean, it does. And, you know, sensible, careful people almost get their feet run over. So it'd be nice if there was something... Can, can Caltrans say no to a bollard on Elkin Street when it's not part of the highway? Is that their...
Not on the city property, I would imagine, but, but the city, Caltrans line goes like, it's right through here, so it goes right...
Oh, it does go down there?
Yeah.
So it does, it means there's...
It doesn't go through, it comes right along the flow line of the curb through there, but that, that particular curb cut is split jurisdiction.
Then they can't. So I have a question about these.
Yes, I forgot to talk about those, sorry.
Is this really as good as we can? This is so unattractive. To have this on either, on, by the Red Church, the most photographed building in our county and perhaps in the state? Really? I mean, come on, people, you can't do this. I mean, in, in the name of Vision Sonora, we're doing this? I mean, I don't...
It would be, to do the bulb outs without having those, I think that...
We're having these because we have bulb outs?
Down here at the, at the front of City Hall, yes. And then the other one is to, you know, give much awareness to the pedestrians as we can.
Is that the only way to do it?
That is the standard for traffic safety right now.
But I think the question was, is that the only way?
Unless you put them in the ground.
Unless you put them in the ground?
Well, you could...
Or, I mean, down at Jamestown in front of the elementary school, they have both. They have those signs and they have the underground.
You could do an unlighted one. I mean, just, just the pedestrian warning sign without the light. I mean, just, just the pedestrian warning sign without the lights, without the.
Could the pedestrian, excuse me, could the pedestrian warning sign be farther north on Washington Street as people are heading south? So that they're warned that they're approaching a pedestrian crossing?
Yes, not those particular ones. Those are meant to be right at the crossing.
At the crosswalk.
But having some pedestrian ahead signs, you know, back by Wykoff Street would be, yeah.
Of course, can we do rumble strips or those things are called that are on most highways now on the, you know, at the center line and also at the, at the edge? There are those little rumble strips. Can we do those the other way so that people are alerted? I mean, I just feel like an effort to beautify Sonora, we go to Caltrans for money, which requires stuff like this. On a crosswalk that actually isn't the big problem around here, it's Elkin that's the big problem. And I feel like we are ruining Sonora by this kind of stuff on Washington Street. It makes it look, I mean, it's, it totally, you know, takes away its charm. And I'm not convinced that we actually know what's causing all these pedestrian hits. Because no one, I've asked as many people to tell me, they just tell me that there are this many pedestrians hit. And I, this is just, I mean, I feel like I owe the city of Sonora an apology if we don't worry about this.
There needs to be seen, that's for sure.
Yeah, I guess my big question, honestly, I thought this was kind of a joke, if you want to know the truth.
Yay, Matt.
I'm trying to be mean, but, I mean, I don't know if anybody else has seen this, but the giant yellow, you know, right in front of the red church. It's, you know, hey, we've got this great, beautiful church and, oh yeah, we've got a crosswalk right here. Right here, and it's not a problem. So I guess my big question is, how long typically with, with all these improvements, would something like this take?
To build it?
Yes. A reasonable construction.
Three weeks.
Okay.
Yeah. Not that, not really that difficult of a job. It's demoing some concrete and then, you know, bombing it up to the proper grades.
You know, the reason we met with this is because of the conversation that took place about putting the lights in the street and the maintenance. So I'm wondering, from a maintenance standpoint, how long do the lights in the street last? Does anybody have any, any experience with that?
Such a busy intersection.
I would, I would venture to say that if those are put in, Caltrans would have an agreement with the city where we would assume that responsibility. Because Caltrans maintenance absolutely is not one to deal with those kinds of improvements. So, and how often they need to be repaired, I don't, I don't know. I don't have the experience, but.
I know that in Oakdale, they had one right where the high school is. And they, when the lights after, they repaired the lights a number of times, they just turned it off. But I don't know the longevity. It's, you know, it's, it's asphalt is flexible pavement. So every time you get a car driving across it, it moves a little bit. And the bigger the car, the more it moves. And over time, anything in the pavement is going to get scratched and scraped from it.
When we met with Caltrans, the first meeting, in terms of dating myself, we talked about the underground and their maintenance and their road. People were there and they were adamantly opposed to seeing like something that go in and they felt that it would be a maintenance issue because of the heaviness of the vehicles and the traffic that flows through downtown. So, and I'm not advocating that. But I'm just saying that that was what came out of that meeting.
I'm sorry. Has the conversation switched to those in the, in the street?
In the world wide. So I'm going to ask this question again. This is the only option.
That is the recommended option for?
Caltrans recommended option?
For maximum visibility for pedestrians.
And these, these are going to be at all of the crosswalks that are listed right here?
Right now, just proposed at one, the red church to Elkin, and then the bulbout at City Hall. They're not views typically where you have a stop sign. Because the stop is your control mechanism. It's for mid-block crosswalks to give the pedestrian a little more visibility.
So I'm going to say we should go back to the flags. Give it people a flag and walk across the streets.
And a crossing guard there.
I have a, that's a good question.
Go ahead.
Um, are, I don't know what I do with them. There they are. Does Caltrans require this for this project? Or this is just something that we added because we were freaked out so many people got hit, although it's not this part of the street.
That is, Caltrans definitely recommends it. They have a, some guidelines for complete streets and pedestrian improvements. They definitely advocate that. The traffic engineers in Willdan are adamant that you should have them there. It is up to the city though, unless Caltrans says you have to have it. But I believe you do have the option.
Even though it's not a crosswalk where, I don't think any of the pedestrian accidents have happened there.
But on a safety perspective?
The illusion of a safety perspective. I mean, I, I get it.
That's true, but think about this, because if we ever do a safety project, the rest of the crosswalks, then these would go in there as well.
I know. I mean, we're ruining Sonora. Okay, thanks. It's not your fault. Don't take it personally.
All right, yeah. Okay, any more questions?
We were the ones who asked for it initially.
For Mr. Grant.
I guess my, my comment would be for at least not having the bulbouts in front of the City Hall parking structure.
I second that one.
Not having the bulbouts?
The bulbouts, the inch points.
That's going to be another discussion. I think we're kind of getting the cart before the horse. I mean, we need to have, we have staff come up here and we need to ask questions of staff and then get public comment and bring it up.
I have one more question. And I don't really know why I'm bringing this up. I thought there used to be signs or the pedestrian lights on Snell Street. Did I make that up on the last, on the thirty-five percent? Thought there was Snell Street as well.
No, I.
I'm, I'm not advocating.
I think on the, on Snell Street, on the thirty-five, I think we had these flashy beacons on both sides of Snell too.
Right, but you took them off for a listen.
Right.
Okay, any more questions for the engineers? CNN, thank you. Is there any staff, more staff presentation or are you ready for a public comment?
We'll have comments after, but nothing more right now.
Okay. So I'd like to open up for public comment. And I think we should set a three-minute per person.
Maybe see how many people are talking. It's hard to see three minutes.
We got three minutes, I love it. Right down. Thanks for hearing it. I would like to speak as a volunteer engineer, as a resident of Sonora. And I make a few suggestions on this. I, I really, I'm thinking maybe just a little more practical to what I see. What my first thing is, delete the hardscape area in front of our station. This surface has no purpose. You're going to have benches in here. This is in the sunlight, it's dark. When you do this, you're, you're creating kind of an obstruction. Somebody coming along in here, you can always move over to the right bicycle. I'm going to do a stop sign. You're eliminated that. You're going to wind up with a safety hazard here. So let's just delete that. Delete it, you know, leave it, the curb, curb line as it is. Funny thing, it's an interesting thing in Sonora. On Washington Street, the right-of-way line between the city and the state is at the flow line of the curb. As long as you're working outside the flow line, you're on city right-of-way. You can do what you want. The other thing I think is, is I delete the bulbouts in front of City Hall on here. Bulbouts are meant to increase the visibility of approaching vehicle. If you look at this right now, right in, in, in front of the parking garage there, you've got plenty of visibility. You also have plenty of visibility here because we've taken out the parking in front of that. So I, I think the, the problems with these, the bulbouts is here. Narrowing everything down to two lanes. In the case of emergency, you're going to have a problem. The, I think the most important safety improvement that you should be looking at on this is basically just go back here and look at that sidewalk. That sidewalk is depressed. It's even with the pavement. A car can easily drift into that sidewalk and hit somebody. And all you need to do is, is put a sidewalk right on top of the old sidewalk. And then do, back in here, back by Wykoff Street, do a, a flashing light that says pedestrian crossings ahead. Maybe that's the only thing you'll need. Just to advise the driver when, when, when there are any Sonora, that there's multiple crosswalks ahead. And if you look at it, there's a hump in that road.
Okay, Jerry, time's up.
Coming southbound and I think you, and you can hardly see the crosswalk. Take, take a right now, southbound, and you'll see there's a hump in the road. You don't even see the crosswalk. And that's all I have to say and I, I hope I get to read my, the rest of my stuff. But I do think you ought to give it some time and a little more public input and see what Caltrans has to say.
Any questions for Jerry?
So I do have a question. So Jerry, where exactly would you suggest putting the pedestrian sign on northern Washington Street?
The pedestrian ahead?
Yeah.
There's a place right there where it used to be the, the business bureau sign. They've taken that out. And it should be right in back of the sidewalk on it. And in fact, that is a Caltrans requirement is that they have a pavement marking that says pedestrian crossings ahead, and they do. They're supposed to put a sign. And that should be done by Caltrans.
I was in San Diego recently and there was a pedestrian crossing sign that I assumed is a Caltrans, you know, that's, that meets Caltrans requirements, that actually was effective and it would be effective at Wykoff, I think. That is, it almost, I feel like it was sort of, it wasn't exactly shaped like a stop sign, but it was shaped enough like a stop sign, so you sort of paid attention to it. But it actually had lights around it. And at least it would be away from the red church, you know, away from the front of the red church. And, and I think was, I, I found it pretty, pretty effective.
So would you consider one of these?
Wait, 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 we'll do a couple of comments for, beginning discussion. Any other questions for Jerry?
Okay, thanks, Jerry.
Yes, actually. You doubt this gives some thought to the accident rates down Elkin? And do you have any new suggestions for dealing with either my little issue with the corner there or general safety that we can actually do without closing the street?
You, you have a problem. The problem that you have is congested in the downtown. Every day, you're a stop and go. And you have a probability with driver frustration of coming into town and getting off of Washington Street as fast as they can. So I don't know, maybe the, the advanced sign might help. But the overall thing is you need to get the traffic off of Washington Street.
Thank you.
No other questions? Thanks. Who's, Jerry, next?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Barry Rudolph, proud resident of Columbia, California, uses the intersection a year quite vigorously. Your great presentation tonight took about fifteen minutes of open hour to talk about volunteerism, it's a pretty important topic. I don't think I'd get through what I had in three minutes. But I did write it down, so just in case, so I better get going. My comments are in reference to the article that I read about in January in The Democrat. So some of it, I listened to the presentation tonight and it looks like a lot of it may still be relevant. Thirty-five percent spent so far, one-hundred-and-five thousand. Is this a case of doing anything, even if it is wrong, just for the sake of getting a grant? It sure seems like it. And it is April Fool's Day, so I thought, well, maybe this is, this is not true. Peter Roy, longtime Palm Springs County Roads Director again from The Democrat. Bulbouts are meant to narrow a street, especially northbound traffic. These are called traffic calmer's. Google "traffic calmer's campfire evacuation" and see what comes up. Traffic calmer's contributed to delaying the evacuations during the campfire, especially through downtown Paradise when four lanes were necked down to. Wider evacuation routes, not narrower. All in the name of boosting commerce as well as traffic and pedestrian safety. That's not me. That's according to the LA Times article talking about the Paradise Town Council's road calming diet, complete with benches and landscaping to beautify the area on November twentieth, twenty eighteen. Installing permanent concrete barriers in each form along Washington Street will serve to hinder evacuations and the use of the street and those locations for fire equipment to use the street for operations, especially for buildings that are on fire next to where those are located. For example, if evacuation were to occur in the middle of the night or during early morning, as was the case in Paradise, law enforcement could reconfigure Washington Street as a one-way route with two lanes going out of town and one southbound lane using parking spaces along the sides of the street. Very few cars are parked along the street at night when the business district is shut down. Roy says that acceleration speeds up there at Elkin Street in The Democrat. No kidding. It's the first place where you can go faster than zero to five miles an hour. Try driving twenty-five miles an hour through downtown Sonora, middle of the night or early in the morning. It feels much faster than twenty-five because you are so used to being stop and go. Roy does not say what accelerated speeds are. Anything over zero is an accelerated speed. Rachel Keller. Improve vehicles, vehicle, vehicular circulation, pedestrian safety and intersection function. Let's break this down. Improving vehicular circulation. How does installing a barrier that causes a vehicle to first turn left, then turn right around a barrier, an improvement over being able to proceed straight ahead with no obstacles to navigate? By the way, anyone who has lived here for any period of time knows that this is the point where traffic backs up and many southbound vehicles yield the right-of-way to those entering from Snell Street to southbound Washington and to those trying to go northbound on Snell from Washington. It is really a smooth operation by all involved. I've been doing it for close to thirty years.
Okay, Barry, time's up.
Okay. Can I have these entered into the?
Sure.
Into your record and Hopey has?
Agreed.
There are a lot of important points in here, I think, that need to be considered by the council. I think the community would benefit from hearing of it. We will stop.
So any questions for Mr. Rudolph?
Can we have more time?
Well, once you've established.
No, you have to go back and let everybody else speak at the same amount of time.
Did you, were you going to?
No, I was waiting to make a motion to extend my time. Where'd they go?
Or here, or somebody. Who may lose next?
David, actually, just a point, I think I thought it was that I heard that I wanted to see the council member ask a question. council member ask a question, that time is extended on that.
I didn't brown that, I read that too.
So, let's be clear. Public comment is three minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah. That is correct. If someone asks, that's why I ask people if they have questions for anybody, and if they ask a question, then that person can respond to it. So yes, if you notice that, has done exactly that, so.
I just have actually a confirmation, one in thing. At some of the other meetings, they talked about the city being responsible for the sidewalks, and then the Caltrans or the grant will be responsible for anything else. Is that, am I understanding that properly? Does the grant money cover all the sidewalk work?
So, two-part question. As Jerry mentioned, the Caltrans right-of-way extends from the face of curb to face of curb. City's responsible for the sidewalks. The grant does cover improvements both within the Caltrans right-of-way and outside of the Caltrans right-of-way, within the limits of the project area, which basically encompass the area from the crosswalk to the south in front of City Hall, just beyond the crosswalk to the north on Washington. And Michelle could give you a better idea.
So in other words, all of this sidewalk here and all of that is covered under the grant?
All the way up to the crosswalk area to your, to the north.
So it's just everything here?
The area that Jerry has suggested additional sidewalk improvements be undertaken is outside the scope of the project, and we don't have environmental clearance for that, and it's outside the limits of what we're working with.
You're talking about these sidewalks?
Yes, that area there.
So this, does it end at the crosswalk, so this little piece of sidewalk, is it, I mean?
No, it's, it's all, everything you see there is covered by the grant.
Anyone else like to speak on this side?
Hi, Stephanie Seuss, owner, Seuss Insurance property. Wow, mic drop, Barry. Good job. Yes, thank you. Sorry. I know. So, yes, it's better in front of Seuss Insurance, but this whole thing, I'm with you, Colette, I think this is ruining Sonora tomorrow. Look at this. And Mark, you're right, no artist renderings. Who knows? I mean, I have a good idea of what that's going to look like in front of the red church. It's going to change what the red church looks like. Bottom line. It's not going to come back. That's what it's going to look like. The other thing, lights in the street, right? And Mr. Miller's right, Caltrans is going to make the city responsible for anything in the right-of-way. Everything in the right-of-way, all those bulbouts in front of the red church, the little bit on Elkin, or, yes, Elkins, the hardscape, that's all on the city now. When you get that encroachment permit, you're going to have a waiver liability that you're signing, and you will forever be responsible for that. That's fine, as long as you know that. I'm still not clear if the sidewalk itself is going to be redone, or if it's just brick bands. If the sidewalk itself is going to be redone, is TUD involved in this? Because again, I keep hearing there's a sewer line in front, kind of in front of our building going down the street. That's a problem. I would hope someone's talking to TUD about what you're going to do with that sewer line. If you're going to blow it up, well, you, you know, fix it while it's open. I probably would go along with this as a three-week construction project. When I called staff today, I asked, where are you in the encroachment permit? Sounds like you have applied for the encroachment permit. And maybe four to six months?
For the, yes.
To get it. Okay? That's assuming all the design exceptions are approved. So again, I don't know what that hard timeline on the project is funding, again, not my issue, except if this doesn't go through, obviously you have to repay the funding. I'm not wild about this any more than anyone else. But if you look back to mymotherlow.com today, and they have how this project started in front of our office, at least we've made progress. But again, I, it's still not great. And again, it changes the essence of what downtown Sonora is. This goes through, my assumption is everything else down to Stockton and, well, all the way down to South Washington will be based on this. Right? Which, we're setting precedent here. So that's a big step. I know my time's getting quick. The only other thing, and I don't have pages two to nine in here, and I'll track them down, is I've got a rolled curb that shows in front of our office, and I heard you say, yeah, it goes right into the sidewalk. You're going to have to explain to me if it goes rolled curb to the existing curb better or what I'm doing right at this point.
I can explain it.
Okay. And, yep, that's it. Not happy, but it's better than what we started with.
Any questions for Ms. Seuss? Anyone else like to speak?
Okay, later I began. A year ago, year and a half ago, there were 40 people in this room, and as the city council, not a single person in the audience was carried for this, and there was a promise that there would be ample opportunity to give input, and ample notice of those times to come and give input. And here we are again. Friday it came out, Monday it saw the agenda. I don't know if the folks in the church were informed, or the schools were informed. Sonora Insurance isn't here. They wrote, well, once they said, yes, we will bring people to comment on this. You're not doing your job as a city council on keeping your constituents informed, and it's disappointing. You're doing the least is required, but I've said that to you before. I have concerns. One of my concerns is the red church was interested in keeping the bull, the bullards. The folks at the red church had liked that, and whether it's realistic or unrealistic, if that's what they want, I think someone should be speaking for them. They should be here speaking for themselves. But I would recommend the bullards out there. I question the hardscape. I think if you went downtown, ask any business, any of the residents, would you like to lose a parking space so you can have a hardscape? They have no idea what a hardscape is, you have to explain that to them. As soon as you do this, they know, would rather have a parking space. So I see no advantage to turning that into a different area. It's indeed tended to be another area to count, but there's park benches closer down to City Hall, not just a few people away. And across the street, there's a whole park with park benches, with picnic tables with cement benches. It's not needed, I don't see the advantage of it. I'm glad that Ms. Seuss brought up the liability and the indemnification clause that you have with Caltrans. As soon as you start getting into their territory, you can go what you want there, or they'll agree what you want there. But now it's yours, and there is, there's a cost to maintenance, but there's also a risk and a liability of whatever you put out in that roadway, whatever damage it causes, whatever injury it causes. Those are now on the city, and you have to ask if that's the best use of taxpayers' dollars. I also agree with Matt, I think it was Colette, about not needing the bulbout over by the city parking lot, City Hall parking lot area. That is a functional, works by crosswalk. I haven't seen any problems there, and I've used it quite a bit. And if I still have time in my three minutes, I want to let Connie know that back in the 70s, they did have flags at Laguna Beach, where the parents got worried about kids trying to cross Pacific Highway, and they made flags, and the kids would pick those up and hold them out and march across. And then finally, somebody decided they should be half reflective and half colorful. So I remember when I was a journalist down there, I was writing an article about these kids walking across, holding the flag. So it's been done. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for Ms. Mayor?
Hi, Phil Salden, retired city employee in the Public Works Department. I wasn't going to speak in until I heard this insane three-minute thing with a half room full of people. Number one, the sewer line issue in front of Ms. Eaton's building, that door of Sonora Insurance Agency. She's been trying to get her sewer line replaced for probably 10 years. The city talked about replacing the sidewalk. She would have paid half of that cost of that sidewalk, as long as the sewer line got replaced. All these sewer lines up and down Washington Street are either cast iron or they're tile pipe. They're cracked, they're rotten, they've had red X, acid, everything in the world sent down them for who knows how many years. If you're going to do something there, you better replace that person's sewer line, because once you put this crap in there, they're never going to be able to fix it. There is a sewer problem right there, just below Ms. Seuss's property, and it boils out the sidewalk, runs down the gutter. You can talk to TUD, they can tell you all about it. Go down to Jamestown, where their little bulbouts are, and look at the red curbs that are around their bulbouts, and look at all the black tire marks on them. The tire shops and the oil and the shops love them, but the people who run into them, they forget that they're in front of them. They run into them, they bust their tires, and it looks like crap. These signs that you're looking at versus the stuff in the street, the lights in the street aren't going to work around here because you have tires that run around with tire chains on in the winter time, and they're just going to bust those things. Now drive down the street and look at all of these signs that are up and down Washington Street, and every street we have in this town, there's so many of these signs, you can't breathe, you can't possibly read the signs and drive your car, so people get tickets they didn't need. But speaking of tickets, now I offered up to the police department prior to Chief Anoril becoming chief. You know what your problems are with a lot of these people we have around with these things? I was in that bucket truck replacing banners across Washington Street for more years than I can count. I've seen everything in this town. Propane tanks were run over, vehicles in the creeks, pedestrians laying underneath vehicles. It's crazy, but in that bucket truck, I'd pull up in front of the Bank of America in the morning, and I'd sit there, six or seven peat off the ground, and I could watch, and you could do this for two hours, vehicle after vehicle after vehicle after vehicle, for two hours, texting and talking on their phones, in their lap, driving with their knees. Hell, it works. I don't work for the city anymore, but I offered up, have an officer sit in that bucket truck and watch those vehicles drive past you, and I bet you in two hours, during the middle of the week, you could probably write 200 cell phone tickets. Easy. So maybe you should not be putting lipstick on pigs, maybe you should be fixing the infrastructure, the sidewalks, these sewer lines, get rid of half the signs in town, don't put up these gull, bright orange things. Yeah, you're going to destroy what character is left in Sonora.
Time's up, Bill.
Much longer than everyone else that's been up here. So my name is Olivia, and I do have quite a few concerns. I was here when the 35% ban was reviewed. I was not happy about this project at all, and I still am not on the 4-2 of it. I think it does pass come a long ways, and I think that has been a great deal to Alyn Partnitt in engineering it and listening to what the public's concern was. I think he's done an amazing job with that. However, I still don't think that we need those bulbouts right there. Thanks to my job, I've worked with several people from the Paradise Fire and listened to their stories personally, how they need to escape. And one of their main things was congestion and not being able to get through and having those bottlenecking their streets, which is the same kind of thing that we're looking at here. We do live in Palm Springs County, that's a very high fire rate, and we've had the room fires and heat fire back to back. My fear is that by having those bulbouts, we are going to cause even more congestion. If for some reason we do need to be able to evacuate quickly, that is going to cause a slowdown. EMS generally does not use downtown, they don't use the main street, they try and take the back roads, but in some instances, there is no other option, they do need to get through there. And how are they, how are they going to make it down the street when they have nowhere to divide the cars? They won't be able to have people move to the sides and get out of the way so that they can get an ambulance who may be saving your relative's life, or a fire truck that could be saving your house from burning down. They can't get through that. There's nowhere for those cars to go in an already congested street. A lot of the accidents that are involved, that accidents versus cars, are, is not really in this area. More down towards the Heart Rock is where a couple people have been hit, you know, in recent years. Those are the areas that should be addressed, or at least part of this project should go to putting up signage or bringing awareness to those crosswalks as well, not just this intersection. The hardscape, I also don't see much use to it besides allowing that stop sign to be pulled forward without an additional fee to allow people to go back over that way. It's keeping them left of the center of the road. But again, I don't really see much point to it. And if we are going to tear up these sidewalks, and they are going to have to be rebuilt, I really do think that the sewer lines should be repaired at that time. A lot of the businesses, which I helped manage a lot of those places downtown, they have all had sewer issues, and it has been an ongoing problem. So while it's torn up, why not fix it? Why have to go back in a couple of years when there's no other option but fixing it and do it then, do it now and save that additional cost? So that's all I have.
Any questions for?
My name is Sharon Marvich, representing the Palm Springs Heritage Committee. The Palm Springs Heritage Committee is concerned, as always, with minimizing or eliminating inappropriate and modern street improvements to our historic town. Make sure another Cultural Resources survey that you were able to get completed with CGT money has made a conclusion that our downtown is eligible to be a national registered district. It's that significant. And here you are at the top of the most significant and historic corner that we have in our downtown. I'd like to particularly thank councilwoman members, Williams and such, for pointing out that coral sign that is proposed to go right where our most historic, one of our most historic buildings is. In terms of ballers, the gentleman mentioned ballers, I hope you do not put in the historic imitation historic ballers, and rather just go with the metal posts that you have today. It seems like with the variety and the enthusiasm, or shall we say the passion that has been expressed this evening, would it be possible that this project, even though it's at 65%? This is a not, since 65% solution is, needs some work. Is it possible that it could either be reviewed by someone at Caltrans District 10, who is familiar with transportation projects in historic districts, or that Will Damon could have someone on their staff who is familiar with transportation projects in historic districts, take a look at this and see how it can be more tailored to the uniqueness and the historicity of the Queen of the Southern Minds. The last thing we want to do is to start a project at this corner, and then it becomes a template all the way down to Stockton Street. And the things that you've heard this evening, I don't think we want to see all of them down the street, and we certainly don't want to see some of them there. So anyway, just a thought, maybe someone at Caltrans, someone at Will Ram has experience in genuine historic old towns, not a town that's trying to look like it's old, but one that really is and has the significance that our downtown does. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Marvich?
I do have one for Sharon.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
People can't wait till I say, yeah.
The, I don't know, I guess the striped sidewalk with brick, is there anything related historically to sidewalks that we've had in the past that were even that, that type? With brick going across?
I cannot speak directly- I cannot speak directly about, well, I can tell you about one sidewalk that I saw uncovered, which was slate and it was wonderful, flat pieces of slate. You're not gonna get that here. If you look at Columbia, you'll see a variety of different kinds of sidewalks, including brick in different patterns. The cement and brick band that you have adopted for the city-approved sidewalk is fairly innocuous. I mean, what you want to try to do, at least in my opinion, is that the hardscape and the things that you introduce into the area are unobtrusive and that they do not detract from the buildings and the ambience and the history and the historicity and the architecture of our downtown. So that you should keep improvements like this to a real, a real minimum in terms of flash or appearance or imitation history.
That pretty much answers it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Marvich? Anyone else? Jill?
Bill Atkins, Public Works employee, I've been since '81. First off, I'll be ditto with Ed Zerisha and also with Bill Sullivan, studies. I was a little bit happy to find that the hardscape was changed to hardscape, although I don't see a point of it at all. It was originally gonna be a carpet, I understand. And we had eight people, we brought up to 10, we're at six right now. Okay? But given what it is, that's what it is. Since I've been around Opera Hall, came into existence, City Annex, we've got the landscape on 40th North, Columbia Way Triangle, Prospector Park, Dave and I built the steps in there. Griggsby Park, I think was in '84. Queen East South, Old Woods Ferry, there's a landscape in Bradford Lot, there's the park horse. There's a restomino way landscaping. We got Mono Way, pistachio trees there, the Bradford pears, further out, we've got oak trees that we put in the drainage, all the stuff needs maintained. And this isn't the full list by any stretch. Keep adding more and more and more things. Seems to be part of the general theme is to add the parks. I understand you've done that through the years and in slimest human capacity, like to be able to keep up with things. Understand the need for pedestrian safety, but along with people not paying attention and going too fast on that driver's side. There's the guy within last year that was walking with his back to traffic on Stockton Road about five in the morning. There's the guy when he turned, I think from Stockton Southbound to Washington where it's four lanes wide, out of corner of my eye, he's running across the street and he's looking ahead. And then there's the woman, even if you're driving, okay? Or what? This is what I see. At least one of us was paying attention. On the one hand, yes, safety, good. On the other hand, you can't fix it all. That's just, you know... A few other things, we've had slaterings through the city. Please be aware that anything you disturb out here along Washington where it stacks slate is what the water goes into and can cause you a problem later. And time limits being what it is, I think I'll leave it where it is.
Any questions for Ms. Atkins? Anyone else like to speak on the side? Last chance. Okay. So I'm gonna bring it back to the council for discussion.
So, I might suggest you try and pick items, we'll work through it item by item and get some council direction. For example, like the bulbous at City Hall, yeah, your name. The hardscape at Dorothy's, and we'll talk a little bit about why that's there. The treatment at the front of the Red Church, and then we can get the siding issue. But I think those are probably the four or five major design elements that have come up. Or something in that fashion. In that way, we can move through and give us some direction of where you want this project to go. Or you can take a vote and we can stop today.
And then we would not have new sidewalks.
You would not.
All right, where do you want to start?
First of all, I would like someone to explain, and I wish we would quit using the word "ballbous." They're not ballbous, they're curb extensions. So would someone, would someone explain what a curb extension is? Please.
It's a whole...
But it's, but isn't it with the contour of the street? It's not like Jamestown where there's a square out in the middle of the road.
Galen, do you wanna answer that?
What's your question?
So, let me just, let me just, from a design standpoint, there's two things that are being, that are trying to be accomplished with that curb extension. One is to have pedestrian more visible to the approaching traffic and not be blocked by abutting parked cars. And the other frankly is to slow speed down in a particular area. So that's how and why they're used. Whether it's appropriate here or not, that's for you guys to make the final decision and recommendation. As far as how it's designed, I defer to Galen about how it's designed, but the purpose of creating those are both from pedestrian visibility and to reduce traffic speeds.
So, so, Galen, so, it's a four-inch curb, correct?
It's a six-inch curve.
Six inches.
Height of it?
Height of it at the sidewalk is usually six inches, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, the bulbous come out, are they tapered as they come out from that six inches or do they go out a ways and then go down? Are they tapered? How's that work?
It's just like the curb...
I'm talking specifically about the ones in front of the museum and the City Hall.
Right.
Or destruction.
They're just, the curb ramps, they're cut just like a regular curb ramp if it wasn't at the curb extension. So here you have a six-inch curb all the way around and then where you have the flare, it goes down to a half inch. And then it comes back up to a six inch.
So that six inch sticks out of the middle of the road for at least two feet?
Oh yeah, it's from the sidewalk where it is now out to the gutter, it's about four feet.
So, does it have to be that high?
That's pretty standard. I mean, it's a standard curb.
Can it taper down from six inches as they go out in the street? I guess that's probably best, like a ramp.
So you can drive up onto more of the pedestrians?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
A six-inch curb isn't gonna stop a car from hitting a pedestrian.
That's another piece I might add, but...
But this is, this is the entire reasoning behind their existence, that it will make it safer for the pedestrians. I'm not defending it.
Because they will be more visible.
I wanna see a picture of it because I'm trying to determine in my mind if this is changing the hell out of it or if it's gonna be innocuous enough that it does improve things. But, as far as, most people do try and avoid going over six-inch curves.
But we've got other crosswalks that don't have six-inch curves.
And they're not the standard. We have to build this to standard.
Is that correct?
Correct.
You know, that, someone, I think actually Connie read from the Caltrans manual at the previous meeting that narrow streets that, that curb extensions, sorry, help, help because pedestrian safety is enhanced by narrow streets. I would like to argue that our street is already a narrow street.
And a slow street.
And a slow street. I would also like to argue that if this is a curb extension, you said that curb extensions match the contour of the street. I don't see how these are matching the contour of anything. And the crosswalk in front of City Hall, there is no parking on either side of that crosswalk because on one side it's, 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 there are entrances on either side into the parking lot. There is no better visibility in a crosswalk in this county, I don't think, than that crosswalk. So why we need elevated pedestrians out there is beyond me. Perhaps we need pedestrian training about how to cross a street. I'm serious. If people are getting hit, they're not paying attention. By and large, I know it's not 100% true, but...
No, it's not.
But it's true in most of it.
Since I, since I often cross that crosswalk...
Maybe you should pay attention.
I am paying attention. I pay very good attention. People fly up the road, it's 35, 40 miles an hour. And there's a, there's a parking spot right in front of where EDA is.
That's right.
And it blocks their vision.
That's right.
Right here. So, I don't need training to tell you that if the people fly up that street.
I don't know. I guess, I, I don't, I rarely see someone going 45 miles per hour on Washington Street, ever, but maybe.
I didn't say 45.
Maybe in the middle of the night. You said 35 to 40. But anyhow, I, I, much of this is so much better, I can't even thank you enough, actually. Much of this. Bulbous are just like a trick. They're like the latest trick to try to beautify a town and it makes us look like low diars in any other town in California. It's not improving anything. It's not adding pedestrian safety.
I wonder if taking that parking spot away in front of what used to be EDA would make it more visible for the pedestrian coming across the street without the bulbous.
Most definitely.
And we could have the, add the other one back in front of Dorothy's.
Why do we do one thing at a time? We're trying to do one thing at a time. So, my opinion on the bulbous is, is, is the safety and that's because of personal experience that I've had up at the street. Now, if we can do another way of doing that, that's, that's great. I'm not married to bulbous either. But to say it's not a safety issue, I think this is the point. So if we need to do something else there, that's great and forego the bulbous, I'm not adverse to that.
So, let me ask Galen a question. Galen, is the, is there enough room in the existing side, well, the planner's right in the way, to have a standard wheelchair ADA ramp within the width of the sidewalk and still have the sidewalk space that's needed?
You have, there's, I'm sorry.
And there's a, and part of the answer is there's an existing planner there that doesn't give you enough room for a sidewalk behind a ramp if the ramp started at the face of curb and came back towards the building.
Talking in front of the parking structure.
In front of the parking structure.
Yeah, the Caltrans has a number of different types of wheelchair ramps. The type that we have depicted here is the most common where you're, you're just coming straight in and then you have the flares. They have another one where you would, you would basically come straight in at grade and ramp up both sides to get to the sidewalk. Right now, this area is all pretty flat. And you can see right now that from one end of the parking garage to the other, it's basically the sidewalks right at grade. So we don't have a, really a vertical problem getting up onto the sidewalk like you do a lot of other places because it's so flat, but it would be a little bit different design than what you see right here.
And the same would be true on the other side. You could pull that back in and do something to...
Correct.
Ramp back into the sidewalk.
Right. In fact, the other side actually has a curb that's not really that far out of compliance and just doesn't have the truncated domes, but it really isn't that far out.
So, an alternative is to redesign the ADA roof. Redesign for ADA access without the curb extension and then take a look at the visibility of the crosswalk on the EDA office side. And it needs to meet at least what the Caltrans standard is, which is 20 feet from the crosswalk.
Before cars, the spacing.
Yeah, spacing. And I don't know what, I don't know what that spacing is there. It seems pretty...
I think it's much less than that.
It seems pretty tight.
Yeah.
So that's an option.
Yeah, I just think we need to do what we need to do to get rid of the bulbous or curb extensions or whatever they're gonna be called. I do believe, I'm gonna say this, in 15 to 20 years, there's gonna be a lot of cities out there with a lot of brick pavers for sale. I really believe that because I think this is one of the newest tricks. My mom lives in Clovis and we went to downtown Clovis and we did that. And in my opinion, it ruined the character of the town because Clovis really was a late 1800s, old west town and now you're going with brick pavers and everything else and it just doesn't fit the character, in my opinion, so.
But it was approved years ago.
It may have been approved, but it wasn't approved in the 1880s. So I'm, I'm against the bulbous.
Go back to the wood board one. Okay, so, do we have direction on, on that location?
Just about bulbous, but there's more on that location, I think.
Like I said, I'm not very artistic. If we're gonna err, I would err on the side of caution and simplicity and choose to forego the bulbous. I quite agree that that is a dangerous crossing, but maybe...
You've worn concerns a few times too, right?
So have I.
I realize and I've walked across you with, as we collect, but maybe we would be doing more, asking for more traffic control or speed control through that section, maybe actually changing the rimbers of the road. I probably have nothing more to conclude relative to bulbous.
I just had a question that's not, I'm a little bit embarrassed of the chief of police to say this, but what's the traffic, what's the speed limit on Washington? Is it 25?
25.
25? Okay. Thanks.
I put that in for you. Yeah, I think the last, the other thing we need to make in context, and I never would have imagined in a million years, but, you know, the Paradise Fire, that, like, you know, I was, used to be a fan of bulbous to a point until then. You know, I breathe it up and I'm going, you gotta be kidding me. People lost their lives because we erected these things, thinking, hey, we're gonna slow down traffic, which, yes, traffic needs to slow down, but it's, oh my God. People really lost their lives over something like that.
They also made a lot of their roads one-way years ago.
I think they're starting to get off. All right, so what's next?
Let's talk about the, the parking, the elimination of the parking and the hardscape at Dorothy's Christmas. The reason that lane was extended out... The, the reason that lane was extended out and configured in the way it is is to create that view back to the north for that car, that stop bar. I don't know, I mean, so, so if there isn't Hardscape there, there at least, at least needs to be striping or, or crosshatching or something to move that person out, to have that angle to view back up Washington. Whether there's Hardscape there or not, it just, so it created an area that you could, that, that Hardscape could be installed, the curb line could be realigned. It could be brought back straight and then those people that don't pay attention to striping will just drive right along the curb line like they always do. But the intent would be to still maintain that lane configuration, to bring those cars out beyond where the stop bar is now, and to create that visibility back to the, back to the north. And I don't know, Galen, if we, if we bring it out and crosshatch that area, does that still affect that, that parking space?
I think the parking space right now comes all the way back into here. So if, if you want to move that stop bar over there, you're going to have to check it out, but I think that you wouldn't be able to push it out without probably eliminating the space even with crosshatching. Because right now, people pretty much have to do that same maneuver to get around a parked car.
But they're, but they're being held back. I mean, that's when they're moving.
Right. One of the reasons we wanted to move it forward is so that if you had a bus there, any other large vehicle, they're not, the tail end of the vehicle is not hanging over into the crosswalk. So right now, it's pushing it out, it's right at about 40 feet for a school bus.
Galen, I have a question.
Yes.
So is there enough, the reason why the stop was pushed out is so that there would be better visibility coming south on, the vehicles coming south on Washington Street?
Yes.
And is there enough space after the crosswalk for a school bus to be entirely out of the crosswalk?
Yes, that's what, that's what we have right now.
Actually designed it, not what is currently.
What's there right now, the stop bar is pretty close to right in here, so half the school bus, or at least, you know, a half third of the school bus is in the crosswalk right now.
Sure. So where the crosswalk is currently, and I don't know really actually who I should ask this question of, but, so where the crosswalk is currently, is there a problem that, that traffic coming from the north, going south, doesn't see a car or stop at Snosture?
It's not the traffic coming south, it's the person sitting there looking for the traffic coming south. The angle, if the stop bar is further back, you can't see up the road because of obstructions and, and the driver position and the position of the car. So that's the point of bringing it out further to have that view back to the north.
I guess I've never experienced any trouble there, right? Is coming up, have there been problems with that? Or is that...
Well, I don't know that anybody's been hit in the middle of the intersection because they didn't see an oncoming car, but if you're looking at designing something to meet traffic safety, then that's why it's set up the way it's set up.
And the other thing is, is usually the traffic is backed up, so you know, when it's backed up, it's stop and go, so it's easy to see.
If I'd looked there, I can't have that intersection locked. Okay.
I was never married to the, the bulbout there at that point, anyway. I think if we did a little striping that brought it forward and, and saved that parking spot, I don't have a problem with that personally.
Now, down, you know, down by the Sinar Hand, we've got striping.
Yep.
And nobody pays attention to it.
I do.
Very few people pay attention to it.
Well, if it's a parking spot and someone's parking it, they're going to pay attention to it.
Yeah.
Well, how could, would be, the question is, would be, be able to put a parking space there?
Well...
Well, if I look at the scale of the map, it's about, the widest, well, almost the widest part is about 25 to 30 feet. If you get, until it starts to taper back down on both sides, one's shallower taper and one's sharper taper. So, and then you've got the taper area that would be a piece of a parking spot, or at least for that or a buddy, buddy thing. So...
Well, all we can do is, is try and lay it out, take, remove this, lay out the existing parking and see where the, where that stop bar would end up without compromising the space. And I don't know, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Is there any way, I'm going to get up...
So, so, so I guess the direction is, you, you don't want, well, does the council want or not want that Hardscape there? And if you decide you don't want it, then it creates some other design options.
So I'll ask my question. Is there any way to move this over some?
No.
Which one? This, this particular crosswalk right here? Because that's actually a shorter crossing area, and then if this was moved back even three feet to allow for more parking. Right now, where it hits on the west side of Snell, or Snell, Washington, that's right in between two driveways.
Okay.
So to move it, we would have to move it all the way to here, and then you have issues, space issues here.
Plus you have people jumping that. They'll, they'll go with the angle.
Cutting across or walking.
They won't go all the way to the stop bar. Yeah. What do you think, on the brick? I think it made sense when it was a parklet or maybe an Italian style gelato corno where you could sit there at your leisure, enjoy the sun and the ice cream and the coffee. Once it gets cut down to this, it seems like an afterthought that has no purpose anymore except directing the traffic. If we can do without it, it, I think would fit our vision, or more importantly, our public's vision of this historic corner.
I also wonder how many people are going to sit out there in that piece of traffic and eat the gelato.
Well, Mrs. Sisters, Mrs. Sisters selling ice cream.
I will never sit out there.
You don't sit out there, you sell the $10 ice cream.
I wouldn't put a bench there.
I'd welcome to sit on the park.
I would never put a bench there. It's too close to the room.
So then that just asks, that begs the question, why is it there?
Okay, well, then you could redesign it.
Well, we'll see, yeah, we'll eliminate Hardscape and see how it affects the parking turn.
Okay, what's next?
So I don't know if there's any objection to rebuilding the sidewalk in front of the red church, making it a vertical, vertical, standard vertical curve to keep cars out of there as much as that would with the ramps, but I think the question is, should it be brick or should it just be concrete? If that's, if that brick is objectionable or takes away from the character of the church.
I would suggest that we do the same thing that we're doing with all the other sidewalks.
Just that same still striped pattern?
So would this be brick or would this be cement made to look like brick?
No, well, the, the current proposal is to, is to do it in brick like the bands are, or like the other Hardscape would be. Or make it concrete, just like the rest of the concrete and, and just have some brick accents.
What's going to be cheaper and less longer?
Well, what's going to look nicer?
Yeah, for sure.
Cheaper, meaning cheaper, that's a tax, that's three different questions.
Can I add to that, Matt? I think it's up to the mayor.
The, from a maintenance standpoint, the concrete's easier. From a cost standpoint, the concrete's cheaper than the brick and the handwork that's involved with the brick. What was the third part?
Uh, what's going to last longer.
Concrete lasts longer.
Okay. We did a real good job as a council, and I think Jerry, you were doing it, I think the city came in, did a bunch of work too, in front of the gun house.
That's the plan here.
That's the plan.
Have that distressed looking concrete.
Yeah, yeah, and it really looked good, but it's, it fits in so well, and then after a couple of years, when the newness wears off of concrete, it looks like it's been there for 60 years.
They hold that, they hold that sand washed.
Yeah.
So, it sounds like you're an advocate of that.
I'll, I'll be honest with you, and, and I'm not sure if this is exactly where we're going with this, I'm not a huge fan of the brick lines on the sidewalk. It just, to me, doesn't fit with the character. I'm not a fan of it. And I, I don't think it fits in with historic character, but that may just be this one council member's opinion.
But we've had, I mean, we've got it in other places. And the design committee, the design committee did agree that this design with the concrete and the brick stripes.
Were there, were there any issues with maintaining it? The, the brick, was it, I mean, would it fall apart quicker or anything like that?
Yeah, it'd be, it's going to be tougher.
I can answer that. I've heard water gets under those bricks. Cars drive up on the sidewalk, they come loose, and once you get one brick loose, the rest of them come loose. So out in front of Sagerstrom's real estate office, you're going to stamp it, give a deal.
Seth, I thought I remembered some bricks popping up on me before because I'm not the, the most athletic person in the world and tend to trip, so I think I remember something about that. It was Sagerstrom's and there was another place down on the other side.
So do we have consensus then on what we want to do in front of the red church? You want concrete and brick? You're trying to envision it.
Well, he likes a three dimensional idea.
Concrete and concrete. You know, I actually don't, excuse me, mind this, the brick striping going down the sidewalks. I'm not quite sure how it looks on this curved sidewalk in front of the red church. I'm actually not sure I think it's appropriate there.
I'm inclined to believe that if we're going to have brick there, then just some little striping to match the other sidewalks would actually fit in better, where it were on each end of this.
I could write the crosswalk in.
Well, I guess there's no end there, but yeah, kind of the crosswalk into the entrance. So maybe just do the 90s and then maybe a stripe down in front of the entryway?
We'll work on it.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. We still got 90 to go, so.
But, so concrete and brick bands, not all brick?
Yeah. I think that's pretty straightforward. Okay. Next.
Well, let's get back, let's go to selection of pedestrian warning signs. So we, so the answer, the obvious answer is, you don't want Caltrans standard pedestrian actuated warning signs.
My reflection, probably not.
I know.
Is there a way that one of these can be put on North Washington Street further up? And when a pedestrian is going to go across the crosswalk there on North Washington, that they can hit something and it will warn the people further up on North Washington Street?
That's not how these are designed. I don't know that there's an actuated remote, I mean, it would just be a pedestrian crossing ahead sign.
I would rather have that than these ugly signs.
So, so the alternative is that, and we can, not we, Galen, Galen can check on the rumble strip kind of thing. There's a, there's another, there's a, there's a, there's a couple of other things. Caltrans has, has done pedestrian crossing warning pavement marking like you see already on Washington. And then there's also, they have a fancy word for it, but it looks like sharp teeth out in front of the...
Hard tile or alligator teeth.
Yeah, they have a name for that, but it's a, it's an advanced warning of a crosswalk to supposed to alert drivers. And we have them at the, I think at the high school crosswalk, and maybe, I don't know if they put them in Elkan or not.
They did.
At Elkan, okay. So that's an advance, that's an advanced warning of a, of a crosswalk ahead, some distance ahead of the crosswalk, some, some distance before you get to the crosswalk. I mean, we can put that kind of striping in, we could put the pedestrian warning painting in the street, and then look at a pet, pet crossing ahead sign as far, as far back as, as makes sense as alternatives and see what Caltrans says.
Yeah, I just can't, I can't envision one of these signs, and somebody's painting of the red church or pictures, it just doesn't...
Or any picture of downtown Sinar.
Yeah, we've got tons of signs in downtown, which I...
Not flashing.
Okay. So I think there's enough direction for us to look at that. And I don't, I don't know if there's anything else. Those are the, to me, I think those are the main design elements.
And I would love to see us do more proactive stopping of cars that have cell phones. It's a wall.
So otherwise, I have to move first.
So is there any other critical element that we need to go back and look at?
You know, something I'll bring in, and I don't know how it's going to go, but was there any interest from the rest of the council to talk about the striped sidewalks?
Yeah, I think they decided they liked it.
Okay.
Striped.
Yeah, I mean, I know we talked about it for the red church, but...
You mean, they mean agenda is whether to change what we do there?
No, yeah, no, not, I'm not talking about the port in front of the red church, I'm talking about the rest of the sidewalks that we'll be bringing in.
Striped.
Okay.
What do you, what do you mean? I don't understand what you're saying.
Yeah, to have striped or non-stripped.
Not have any bricks at all.
Yeah, and...
Change the standard.
Yeah, bands. I'm, I'm getting tired, I've been up since like six something, so...
Okay. Okay.
One last thing.
I think we agreed that we're going to put on the birth bands.
Yeah, again, I just was curious.
Mr. Mayor, is there any reason that we can't request some mini dollars or something and if Caltrans on the northeast corner of Elkan there, and then if Caltrans says, no, you can't have, well, that's one thing, but we need something there to keep people.
So with that in mind, I think we go back to Caltrans and ask them again, they weren't, wasn't told, they weren't throwing out the whole baby with the bathwater, they just had a concern on the breakaway, not the red church, they weren't excited about, didn't really see a purpose for it, but on that one, they could see the issue, and so we can try again upon that one.
My belief is that we're going to be...
We tried really hard to get that corner, I mean, we worked really, I mean, Galen's worked hard, we tried to come up with ideas on, to make that corner safer. There's not a lot of options, just like Jay's.
But as we pull it out, we're farther into the street, we're essentially telling people, you're safe up to the curb, and in essence, bringing that danger zone farther out. We're increasing it instead of decreasing the risk, the way I see the design.
But trying to get that curb out there so it pushes them over.
So what is, what is your definition, what is a mini bar?
I'm talking about, there are some places you'll see little old four-inch lumps that are maybe six inches across. I've seen them in, in a tri, I mean, in a pyramid shape or a ball, top of a ball, where they're not very high, but they're enough to be really discouraging driving over.
Okay.
Like spike strips, pop their tires? There you go, that's his.
People would only cut that once.
We'll, we'll see if they'll allow it.
We'll, we'll look into options for pedestrian safety there. And maybe, maybe we could put up some type of a fence along there.
So do you want, I think.
That would be good.
Any other question for you?
Well, it might be for anybody who actually knows the answer. But there was a comment about the rumble strips as a possibility.
We're gonna look it up.
And my question then is, for the immediate neighbors, how much constant noise does that make as they go by? Because if it doesn't create much of a problem, I'd really like them there on Stewart, North Stewart. But. Pretty much. But as soon as I thought about it for myself as an option, since nobody wants to give us. I was thinking, I'm gonna have people driving by it there, 25 to 35, going bump, 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 bump all day and night. And it seems to me that that would be very annoying to the immediate neighbors.
You know, on the Petronas Gulch, I don't know if they work on the highway, but we put in almost like a small rumble strip. And it was, because we were having problems with skateboarders once we put that, the driveway in. They cut us great. And we haven't had problems since we put that in there. So I don't know if there's something like that. But I'm not a highway person, so that probably would not be allowed. But anyway.
I'm really, I'm really open to any new ideas for that type of thing. It's just, every time I've gone around rumble strips, they make a real thump.
Michelle, I don't know if this is for you, but Elkan Street, because that really is the intersection where pedestrians get hit. Is there any kind of pedestrian crossing sign, you know, closer to a Ronus, but on the Harden House side of the road? Because maybe that's where we should have something more than equal to just be.
That's all city there, so the city, I mean, we might not be able to do it as part of the project because it's outside, but the city could do it as city street.
That, that, I think we owe the people who use that intersection maps.
We literally even looked at, hey, just fill in part of the park. And I mean, we looked at all kinds of stuff, but there's not a good answer.
Okay, so staff has direction, correct? Okay. And we will thank your staff for your patience.
And the public for their comments.
And the public for their input.
Okay, then we go on to item J, monthly reports. What?
Starting public input. I mean, just before we leave this subject, the letter that I gave from Mary Ryan Wright, I want to enter it into the.
Should I enter?
I gave one to Secretary.
Should I, okay, should I enter the virtually identical wording of another person that I got through a text message?
As you feel appropriate.
We will see.
Certainly, we're still, I've got to add it, read it into the public.
He has a copy.
May I read it?
Thank you, sir, please. Keep it if you want, I have a permit right there.
Okay, item J, monthly reports, there are none. Item K, Vision Sinar Committee report, there is none. Item L, Communications, there are none. Item M, Councilmember and Department head reports. Start in the back and off to the left and Fire Chief New.
Just real quick, I want to let the council know and the public that we had the career day with the Columbia College Fire Academy today. And I wanted to give a shout out to all the fire agencies that came and participated. We had 36 students in the academy, ran them all through our physical agility, climb the aerial. We did some workshops for resume and applications. And then we got all of the fire districts in the county to come by and set up a table to give a spiel basically on all the programs they offer so that the kids, when they get out of the academy, have a little more direction of what's available to them here. So I just wanted to thank everybody for that. Also, the UU president from Columbia College came out toward the station and the fire ground activity, we had one on today, so that was really nice.
Isn't he the best?
Yes, he is. We almost got him to climb the aerial, but he had a problem, said maybe next time.
That's what I tell you.
Administrative Services Director Gorski, anything?
No.
Okay, Community Services Director, come on, anything? Community Development Director.
That's okay, no problem.
Thank you. It's already tomorrow, I'm already on the board.
We just wanted to let you guys know with all the topic fire clearing that's going on at the county, I just wanted to let you know what we've been working on at Petronas Gulch. For those of you that have, that have not been out there, we've had baseline out there for the last several weeks. We've been doing a lot of clearing on the Alpine. We finished up the Alpine Lane side. We did a buffer and clearing, covered a lot of the under storage and brush. And still, still has a bark field, but it did clean up some of the stuff along between the gulch and the houses there on Alpine Lane. And then we are now working on the Leon side. Tim and I worked together on that. He got a survey crew, we had to find out where our property lines were exactly. And so that was in place. And then we had baseline out and they're doing some clearing for us. We're doing a 50 footer to begin with. We're hoping if we have long enough that we can have them come back and go back and go property. But we, we're not sure how long we're gonna get baseline. So anyway, they were out last week. They had a holiday today, so they'll start back in, back out there tomorrow. So I just wanted to let you know what we've been up to out there.
And we're, we're working off a CalFire prescription for what we're, the clearance that we're doing out there. So it's not just by guessing my golly, let's go chop some stuff down. So, so the forester helped develop that for us.
And Amy helped too, she got the forester.
Fire Chief, or Fire Chief? I'm recruiting for Chief New. Police Chief Andrew, do you have anything?
Nothing further than.
Okay. Our esteemed council, Mr. Goldstein, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, yeah.
Okay. City Administrator Mr. Miller, anything?
Nothing more.
Okay, we'll go over here to Mayor Protown, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Plummer, do you have anything?
Thank you for the opportunity, no.
Councilmember Williams, do you have anything?
Nope. It's 20 minutes to eight.
My dinner is way past that now.
Councilmember Such, do you have anything?
Well, I do, but, and I'll try to make this quick. I don't know how to do this, but I would like to ask that something be agendized for the next meeting. And that is that when I was not a council member, but watched, was here when you were discussing the budget last year, the question of council pay was brought up in 2000, after the recession in 2008. The council decided to cut their pay from 300 a month or something like that to 125.
150.
Or 150.
And 125.
Right. It was from 150 to 110.
It was 300 to 150 for the mayor and 125 for the council.
So I would like that discussion to come back because it's what's fair. And we, Mary Jane is no longer here, so there's an 8,000 or $1,000 a month or something. Her, her, the cost of her medical insurance is gone. And I think the council should, should get that extra money. And if for no other reason, we could use it for continuing education. We have no money in the budget for continuing education, which I think is not appropriate for the kinds of decisions that we're making here. So I would just like that to be agendized for discussion next week.
I would suggest we do that as a part of our budget discussions. As we come up to that, we'll be doing, having those in May before we finalize the budget in June.
Okay, as long as it gets due time. Because I, I think it's unfair that it hasn't, hasn't been brought back even though the economy recovered. And then one other thing, and it's just because it's my commitment to bring up homelessness here. There has been talk that, that we need portable toilets at the camps. That's actually a public health issue in this community. And I would like the city to, to perhaps partner with the county and look at funding that. And we can discuss that also at the budget discussions. I actually called about them too. Toilets would be about $300 a month to share between the two. That's it.
Okay, and my report is, the only meeting that I can, well, I've had several, but the meeting on Wednesday, the 20th, we had the Parking and Traffic Commission meeting. And we had two items. One was about a parking, a red zone and parking, elimination of parking out. And some of the, and for the cosmetology, which some of the long-term people here would know where Roy Zizimart used to be. There was a issue, sight distance issue out in front for differing driveways and different, different people that live back off of Shaw Flat Road. And we ended up doing a, I get, I compromised, there was, there were spots, there were three spaces where people were parking. One was a shorter space, made that red. One was a longer space and made only one parking spot out of the two. The other issue was next, on Linderberg, next to the Union Democrat, two of those parking spots were already, had gone from yellow to regular parking. And we just added two more and still maintained the one yellow spot at the very end next to Green Street going west. And that is it. Meeting is adjourned.